Okay, good evening. I called back to order the council for a work session that began this afternoon at 3:00. We conducted some business consistent with our agenda that's previously been approved. Took a recess and we are now back in session. So we will continue with our agenda at this point and I believe we are set for agenda item. Is it 3, Mr. Treesenberg? You are the staff presenter, so please come forward.
Alrighty. Good evening.
Evening.
Hopefully we'll get some of this worked out. But one of the items that we wanted to bring to you tonight and at least introduce it and hopefully set up for a public hearing sometime in January concerns the recent adoption of session law 2019-111, also known as Senate Bill 355. This included a lot of the what we had been calling over past years, the rewrite of the city and county development regulations. Currently, all of the city regulations are in chapter 160A. A lot of, I think all the county regulations are in chapter 153. This would actually consolidate everything into a new chapter entitled 160D and clear up a lot of the discrepancies that have crept in over the years between certain city and county development standards that really were probably always intended for the most part to be the same. At the same time, there has been a parallel bill request that's been, that had been tracking, sponsored in large part by the Home Builders Association. And when this bill was finally passed, they ended up merging those two together. And parts of it, particularly those from the Home Builders Association side, were put into effect right away. 160D is actually not scheduled to be effective until January 1st of 2021, but the other portions of the bill were actually made retroactive. So they're in effect as of today and have been and apply to previous approvals. One of those items that needed a little bit more clarity and probably is in conflict with one section of our Unified Development Ordinance relates to what they call permit choice. Just to give you a little bit of background on that, there was a, there was an amendment to the general statutes a few years ago already that kind of established this idea of permit choice. It goes along with and works in conjunction with the whole vested rights part of things when it comes to development plans. But essentially, what they were intending to do was to give a developer a little bit of a sense of surety as to what rules would apply to them when moving through the development review process. So currently, if someone comes in to the planning department and they file an application for a site plan or a subdivision plan, and that application is complete, the permit choice rules say that they basically have the right then to state and understand that the rules, the plans, the policies, the regulations that a jurisdiction has apply to that development as stated, adopted, used at that particular point in time. And then they can continue to rely on those rules as the project moves forward. I think in the past, there were some discrepancies after they adopted the first rule as to just how long the rights to that permit choice are valid. And so, most folks, I think, were interpreting that as, okay, you've got your site plan or you've got your initial subdivision plan, it applies then, but if you choose to phase things or do break, break the project up and rework it, then you can kind of start over. This particular bill clarified that further and said, basically, as long as you are keeping things going and pulling permits, whether it's a subsequent building permit or a certificate of occupancy or some other related sign permit, anything else that follows that initial approval, as long as you are not putting the project on hold for any length of time. And I believe the way it works out here is that they have to keep it active and allow no, no more time than six months to go by. If that six months goes by and they haven't been pulling a permit and they haven't been active, then the town or the city, if they've adopted any new rules, you can apply those then going forward. The other trick to it all is that we can be working on something, some kind of development ordinance amendment in the meantime. And let's say that the developer has gotten their subdivision approval, but now they're coming in for their final plat. If we've changed a rule that they find advantageous, when they submit that final plat, they can then request that their final plat be reviewed with that new rule. So if it works, if it works, if they feel that it works in their favor, they can ask for that to be applied going forward. But if it doesn't, if they feel it doesn't work in their favor, we cannot hold them to that new adopted standard regulation, policy, whatever it may be. So we had in the ordinance a section, and I'll scroll, I know you all can't see this, but to the third page, and our current regulatory language about modification of construction standards basically gave the town engineer the discretion to see if we changed something, if it was feasible or reasonable to expect that the developer could incorporate these changes midway through the process. And it's become pretty clear now with this new legislation that we can no longer do that. So the town attorney had put together some draft language. We've looked at it initially. I don't see anything major wrong with it, but I would like to have, take the month of December just to kind of digest it, bounce it off a few of my colleagues and see if we're hitting the mark or if it's still leaving a little bit of ambiguity to the situation. But this at least introduces the topic. We can tidy up the language going prior into the public hearing. Like I say, I don't think it will take a tremendous amount of time. Usually over the holidays, I actually have a little bit more time. So I would not, not, I'm not concerned about going ahead and scheduling a public hearing for January 6th if that's what you would like to do. But if you have any questions on this, I can try to answer them as best I can. Like I say, it is tied in with the whole vested rights part of the discussion, which that has also changed. And there's now specific lengths of time based on the type of approval that someone has gotten from the board as to how long their vested right lasts. Some of them are a year, some of them are up to seven years. So it just depends on what kind of approval that is. But again, I'd be glad to try to answer any questions. And again, just looking to see if you all are comfortable to set a public hearing for January 6th.
Jeff, let me just ask you a quick question and I'll defer to council. Is it too simplistic to, to look at the information on page 116 where you list the current regulatory language and then the draft regulatory replacement language? I mean, is that a, is that a brief overview of this or is that just one segment of it?
That's really the only part of it that we have found that we feel is in conflict with, with the statute. So yeah, ideally, we hope that it'll be that simple is just to take out that one section and replace it with the two, the two subsections.
With the language that's listed there and Roman numeral 3.
Correct.
Okay. Council members, questions? Yeah, I was seeing if anybody has any questions, but otherwise, we, we favor, I guess, directing staff to schedule a public hearing on the matter, first meeting in January. Is that what you're looking for, right?
Yes.
Okay. Don't know that we need a vote on that. Is that a thumbs up sort of thing?
Mr. Mayor, I'm Mayor Fort Temple. I'm going to direct staff to advertise the public hearing to be held at the meeting on January 6th, 2020.
Okay. Any further discussion, question, comments? Hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. So water. Thank you, Mr. Treesenberg. Do you think we're going to be ready for the other portion of his?
Well, I tell you what, while we're working on some of our audiovisual difficulties, I'm going to have the town engineer come up. And I was going to do this during manager reports, but have him just give an update on where we are with the rec center and some of the work that's been going on from the middle podium. And that'll give us opportunity to work on this other.
Good deal. Thank you.
Good evening. So yeah, you may have noticed if you've been out at the rec site over the last couple of weeks, there's been quite a bit more activity taking place. Just wanted to provide you a quick update. So the contractor has mobilized several subcontractors. They have completed most of the paving work on Purvis Street. So that is at final grade minus just some feathering out of some of the shoulders and driveways along the corridor. But the asphalt is completed and all curb work and storm drainage is completed along Purvis. They've also, as of today, they were putting down intermediate based course along Montague Street. They've got all the curb in along Montague as well as the westbound right turn lane on US 70. And so they are working, I'm not sure, I was, I was out there earlier this afternoon. I don't know how far they got. But we're hoping that after the holiday, and they may actually be out there on Friday as well, but by this, this time next week, we're hoping that most of Montague is complete and then they will be moving towards getting the westbound, or I'm sorry, eastbound work along US 70 started. And so there's also been quite a bit of work that has been taking place over inside the building at rec site as well as over, they did some work out at the G-PAC this week as well. Did some patch work out on Garner Road. And then inside the building at the rec site, they have done quite a bit of painting. They've had eight painters on site over the past week or two. They've been working, they, they, they went around the upper ceiling area around the track where we had noticed some of the rusting of the, both the fire sprinkler pipes as well as some of the beams where they are tying into the concrete around the perimeter. They've pretty much gone all around the entire perimeter of that track and done all the ceiling. And then today, they were starting to do the same thing underneath the track. So a lot of that moisture that's coming through the walls was, 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 some of that steel was being impacted by that. So they're working to get that done over the next week underneath the track. And then a lot of the other punchless items and CMU is being, like point up work is being touched up along the way. So good progress being made. We hope to see it continue.
Just a minor item, but at G-PAC, we were there Sunday afternoon. There had been some rain. They, when they were doing some surface, the resurfacing and put in the sidewalk that extended from the building out into the, the farthest parking lot where the, where the resurfacing and the sidewalk meet, it's, I'm not sure how best to resolve it, but it's created a puddle there. So when it's raining, you, you got a, you got a space there that's just holding water until it can dry out. And, but you have to see it when it's wet. And it may just take a little bit more asphalt to, to fill in from the curb and feather into the parking lot. But that's just a minor point, but that's, that's just a punch list item.
We can be happy to take a look at that and make sure that gets.
Couple of places there. So they weren't finished because they still had to fill in behind some, the concrete work they'd finished.
Okay. Question here, Ms. Barrett.
Curious, did they ever give any justification for why they didn't mobilize before now? I know why they're mobilized now, but why did they think they didn't need to?
Can't answer as to what, as to why they, they did not mobilize faster.
Mr. Johnson, based upon what you're seeing now, are we able to get an accurate schedule?
Right now, the, the schedule that has been provided to us shows the building being completed by January 3rd and, I'm sorry, road work being completed by January 3rd. The building itself being completed by January 10th.
At the current rate?
And that includes all punch list and everything.
At the current rate, does?
We, if, if they continue to show the resources that they've been putting in the last week and a half, then yes, we think that they can meet that schedule as long as the weather cooperates. Obviously, we're getting into the winter months and some of the work they're doing, at least on the site portion, is temperature sensitive and sensitive to wet weather. But the inside the building is coming along very quickly. They've, they've already got the elevator inspection completed, passed. They're working on the fire, which has already had one walk through and they had some minor items, one, one item that we've got to address with, with some, two additional lights that we need to install, a couple exits that weren't on their initial plans. But other than that, they're, they're lining up all their inspections and they've got several subs coming in over the next two weeks to work on the building.
Question you mentioned, Chris, that the reason they were working above me and below the track was moisture coming through the walls. Have we, have they worked to stop the moisture so it comes to, is there any kind of issues with those seeping through the, to the walls?
Well, the, the, the biggest issue they had that was also the source of the, the moisture that impacted the gym floor. They're going to be installing a drain pipe, a sock pipe, along the frontage along Main Street. So we've got a, we're working on agreement to get the landscaper back in that the town contracted with separately to remove the plants later this week in advance of a pro subcontractor coming in next week to install the socket pipe. And that'll also, I'm sorry, the sock pipe. And that will also include some weather, additional weatherproofing along the face of the wall on Main Street. They're also going to be looking at the roof because there's been a couple new leaks spotted in a few places on, on the ceiling. So they'll be taking a look at the roof and grimy roofing is one of their subs who's coming in to do some of the punchless work will also be looking at those issues as well.
Okay. Ms. Barrett, do you have a thought?
Well, I'd just say comment is just, the excuse we heard in the past was that they did not have relationships with local subs. And it's kind of ironic that they suddenly do have relationships with them. Don't have an answer for that, but it's, we should have found the button to push a long time ago.
Okay.
Our warranty period starts upon our acceptance of the project, not sometime previously. So, which means we have, we can look and we can find if there's any more leaks and for the next year. And if it's the same leak after that, 18 months from now, if it's a leak that they repair two weeks from now, that's, we're doing the warranty period. Still got to take care of it.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. We appreciate that. Mr. Manager, are we ready to resume?
We're ready to resume with item number one, or item number two, actually, on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Treesenberg, for your patience. And we're glad we got the equipment working properly.
That's, that's not a problem because I was worried that an already fairly dry report would be even drier. So.
Okay. Dress it up some.
Let, let alone anyone watching out there who wouldn't be able to see slides. So thanks to everybody for helping get this back up. I would also just like to take a moment to thank Mr. Jeff Swain, who's in the audience tonight, former planning commission member and a member of the steering committee for Garner Forward. He's been very, very diligent in keeping me abreast of the need to do this. And when I asked, he graciously volunteered to put together an outline for me, which was very helpful in being able to kind of gather and organize my thoughts and producing this report for you tonight. So without any further ado, this is the first annual progress report for the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. And it was always the goal to go ahead and try to produce this report for you prior to really kicking off the budget season. And just to, to review some of this, since some of you were not, not members of the steering committee, and then also for the benefit of those that are coming onto the board, the plan ended up being organized around five major themes. Those being one of maintaining and keeping our character. The second one revolving around housing needs and living spaces and our preferences for those. The third for the places that we work, the commercial settings that we have around town. The fourth was basically how we play in terms of recreation opportunities that the town offers. And number five, which ended up warranting, of course, its own separate plan as well, was transportation and how do we keep ourselves moving. So the first theme again, all of these had a vision statement and then some guiding principles as well as some major recommendations. And that's what I've chosen to focus on in this particular update. So the vision statement for maintaining and keeping our character talked a lot about building, building upon as well as conserving our existing character, trying to find out, you know, what, what are things that we can play into that the development community will find favorable, things that they can play off of. And it kind of goes back to this whole idea that if you have development activity, it's spurring investment. That investment then continues to attract further development activity and it just kind of keeps spinning in this revolving circle and helps us achieve some of our long-term financial goals as well as service goals. So the guiding principles for, for how we say that this is Garner, we look at items like balancing our costs and revenues. We want to look at ways that we can influence design to keep, to keep that character and give a sense that we are improving our value, giving us that whole healthy image, partnering and leveraging our existing partnerships with new or existing civic organizations, whether they're public or private. And also, this is where we also felt it was important to include something, even though we don't have a lot of direct influence, but to make sure that we're including some recommendations that help address and bring attention to the whole issue of school performance. The first major recommendation that was highlighted in the plan was to establish a regular evaluation tool among our peers. One of the things that was called out and should be fairly easy to implement once we can get to it is to go ahead and use AARP's livability index. This is something that I have assigned to our planning services section headed by Mr. Bamford. Currently, of course, we're, we're still settling in a couple of new hires, but hopefully in the spring, this is something that we can take on with relative ease to just go ahead and see where, where we are in terms of livability using this standardized tool compared to some of the other communities locally across the state and even across the country if we, if we choose. The second recommendation was to create a support network for public schools. This is one that was identified as needing a dedicated staff person to organize the network to start with and then to devote probably five to 10 hours a week, once that network was established. As of this point in time, we do not have a lead department identified for this. If this is something that we want to more actively pursue. However, there are a lot of informal things that are already going on. I know both economic development and police partner with the schools on specific programs that could serve as a basis for building this going forward. Our senior planner for transportation is also tied in a little bit with the whole walk to school and bike to school initiatives that some of the schools do participate in. So again, there are some folks that as part of their jobs are, are addressing this recommendation in tangential ways. But without that dedicated staff person and that point person being assigned, it'll probably be pretty difficult to advance this one further. Theme number two, living spaces. So the vision statement for this was that housing for Garner citizens, it needs to continue to adapt to changes in the market and should specifically focus more on just the location, where we're putting certain types of housing, the quantity of that housing, and probably just as more importantly, the design quality to drive how Garner's neighborhoods and residential areas look in the future. This is one that I think we've all seen has brought a lot of debate in the last year. There's, there's a balance there in preserving that traditional look of Garner as well as then embracing the change of what is new. And that's something that I do try to stress with folks that come in, that we're not looking to, to change the residential parts of Garner that are already here today. But at the same time, it's not always reasonable to expect that all future residential development is going to look that exact same way. So again, it is, it is a delicate balance. There are things that you can, that we feel in planning that you can do on a subdivision planning basis that kind of help bridge so that the, the changes from one neighborhood to a next are not so sudden and jarring. But that's, that's the challenge of this particular, particular theme. So the guiding principles for this are to put a focus on attracting both young and elderly populations. You've seen these in probably some of the staff reports that we've produced. Using that design and location to create good places for multifamily development, whether that's townhomes or apartments. Trying to put a, a new focus or refocusing on downtown Garner and North Garner to encourage redevelopment and infill that works with those areas. And also just trying to get ahead of the surge. Of course, we know that surge is really already here. So, but again, trying to stay on top of things with the current development trends and what the development community would like to see as well. So our recommendations here, the first one is to improve our design outcomes with a form-based code. A form-based code really takes a look at the end product first and then works backwards to try to make sure that you have the regulations in place that you need to, to achieve that end goal. So this is something that will be wrapped into the UDO rewrite project. You'll see this slide repeated a few times throughout the presentation for those, for those recommendations that have been incorporated there. Again, just to review, we have awarded the contract to Stewart, Inc. We do have an anticipated project start date either in December or January. Depending on how we kick it off, we may still kick it off in January if there's enough, or December if there's enough time. But otherwise, we'll just wait till after the holidays. And I will be serving as the project manager for that, for that task. A second recommendation is to establish community forums. Again, not as much staff time as some of the other recommendations that are in the plan, but still. plan, but still about 60 hours of time per year, 20 to 30 hours per forum is what the plan anticipated. Again, it depends on the content, the context, and how much you want to try to put into one of these. At this point in time, I will admit that the current workloads and the amount of stuff that we have coming in for review does make this challenging, but we have had discussions with our Public Information Office, just to see how we might be able to incorporate a few little things throughout the coming year. One of those things that we've talked about is assistance in disseminating news from the Planning Department. We've recently restructured our Planning Department pages on the website and trying to set it up for more of a separate news feed for both land use, development issues, and transportation. Rick has talked to us about incorporating planning, staff, and issues into the town's podcasts, so we would like to try to do a couple of those, and also to feature planning at one of the upcoming pop-up town halls. So, those I think are things that we definitely should be able to achieve in the coming year. A third recommendation was to promote multifamily housing in select areas, so this really got back to the future land use map, where we specifically called out areas of the town where we were looking for apartments to hopefully land. Several recent approvals and plans that are actually in review right now are following that land use plan. We had the Pine Ridge Apartments on Pine Winds Drive. That was actually already zoned for multifamily. Waterfield Ridge is the apartment complex that will be coming to you shortly on South Greenfield Parkway. Again, that's in a mixed-use identified area, and the site happens to be fairly steep and lends itself more towards residential than industrial or commercial. And then a third one that's in for review right now is called Elevate at White Oak. These are apartments that are on the corner of existing Salt Hill Road and White Oak Road, so kind of again, continuing to build on that core and nexus we have going south of White Oak. One of the issues that we would like to get a little better feel for and guidance on in our regulatory documents is how do we make multifamily more compatible with single-family? How do you make that transition and what works best? So, again, we have identified that as a task within the UDO rewrite to try to get some things on the books that will help guide developers a little better in what sites they're looking at, which ones they might expect to be entertained for a rezoning if needed, or just how to go ahead and make that transition a little better when they do have their infilling between existing apartments and single-family. Another recommendation was to preserve and protect Garner's existing housing stock. Again, this kind of gets back to, again, the preservation side of things and conserving our character and neighborhood. This recommendation, though, was really tooled towards the Neighborhood Improvement Office, which of course, that office has been discontinued and brought kind of into the Planning Department. There previously had been a strong emphasis on rehab, minimum housing, not that those are going away, but it's been retooled a little bit. To date, Planning Department has absorbed some of that program. We are continuing to manage the relationships with folks like Rebuilding Together, the Triangle. And in the spring, we hope to be able to explore some ways to further retool what the Neighborhood Improvement Office used to do, and I think to try to address that other side of the figure eight that we looked at earlier with embracing the change but preserving our character. One of the things that, again, within the UDO rewrite, if it's something that we feel we would like to pursue further, would be to introduce the idea of what we call neighborhood conservation overlay districts. If you think about some of the thoroughfare overlays that we have on the books now, those are really geared at improving the look and the aesthetics of the transportation corridor. But you can also use that tool to try to protect the way existing neighborhoods appear. You have to kind of choose and decide what you want those protections to look like, but I know some communities have used them to, where you have smaller houses being replaced by the McMansions that don't want to see that happen and keep the, encourage the old ranch style homes to stay and be preserved. You can use it for things like that. That's just one example. But one that I think Garner could be worth it for us to explore, because there is so much of the town that has been in existence for so long, and how do you continue to protect that going forward? And then finally, the last recommendation was revolved around affordable housing. And what we've been doing for that so far has just been really to stay engaged in regional meetings, making sure that we're staying abreast of what's being talked about in the larger region and being able to interact with them and talk the same language. Planning Services Section staff are designated as liaisons to the Wake County Planners Group for Housing. That has been the case and continues to be the case. And one of the tasks, again, in the UDO rewrite, will consider, at least look at what regulations we do adopt, how it may affect the cost and design of housing when we are also trying to balance the investment, as well as the affordability.
Can we interrupt you for a minute?
Sure.
What are the county's expectations from, based on the conversations and the meetings and the interaction with them? What are the county's expectations of a town like Garner?
To date, that particular planners group has really focused around how to use the collective CDBG funds. So, a lot of that has been focusing on some of the smaller projects, whether it's sidewalks, playgrounds in lower-income areas in each community. It remains to be seen where that retooling of those program funds is going to go, but they have indicated a preference to try to use those for more housing issues than infrastructure issues. So, there's been a lot of discussion about ways to keep enhancing rehab programs, particularly for the elderly and folks like that, and trying to make sure that those resources are out there and available for folks to maintain their homes in livable fashions.
A suggestion, that the information you put together for somewhere between the last 60 and 90 days regarding our housing stock and making that available to the two new council members, I think will be an invaluable insight as to the current situation in Garner would prove very beneficial.
Absolutely.
Particularly on some, and some of the background on that and explanation during some formal meetings, but some of the informal meetings you have with them. Thank you.
Theme number three was working places. Here's probably where we have more of an ability to influence design, since the general statutes really don't give us any, they don't tie our hands when it comes to, as much when it comes to commercial and industrial, anything that's non-residential development. But again, it challenges us to look at not just what the marketplace wants today, but what does the community want to see come? A lot of times, there's a pretty significant lag between what a community wants to see come versus the time that developers actually say, oh, okay, yeah, that is something the community could use and it's financially viable. The guiding principles here were, again, to continue to attract unique commercial developments and trying to align our UDO with those desired needs. So, again, the UDO standards and regulations are going to be a key component to advancing this vision. Supporting an anticipated increase in office needs. Office has been one of our smaller sectors, but we are starting to see added interest in office in Garner. Looking at taking advantage of work-in-place trends and understanding those utility demands that are associated with development. So, the first highlighted recommendation was to create a coworking space. We have looked primarily to economic development staff. Any of these tasks that really involve recruitment fall more naturally to them. To this end, though, the Downtown Development Manager has brought a developer to planning for a pre-development meeting regarding possible coworking space in downtown Garner. This developer is finishing their due diligence right now, and I pretty much expect that if they don't come in in December, that they'll have plans before us in January to begin working through that review process. So, I think this is one that could definitely be, when I come back to you next year, I can say, we accomplished on this one. A second recommendation was to establish a cooking studio, farmer's market. Some of this came out of the reimagining of what Fifth Avenue area could become, as well as building on existing things in Main Street. Again, working with the economic development staff is going to be key in this. We certainly have some initial efforts that we can work with and try to build off of. Downtown Development Manager has the pop-up markets. As you had here the other evening, we also have some private citizens that are interested in the idea of farmer's markets as well. So, it's possible that if one of these more temporary kinds of situations gets some legs, that it could develop into something more. Another recommendation was to develop the north. Again, part of that whole refocusing and trying to bring focus to downtown and the north part of Garner. And we have seen a lot of private development and interest coming back, just on the single-family home and townhome side of things. We have the avenues at White Oak on East Garner Road. We have Vandora West that just finished up at the end of Vandora Springs. We have the Creech Road subdivision, which has been approved, as well as Ashton Forest and a few other small ones. Reinvestment in Main Street in the commercial district. We just had Shady's the other night, Full Bloom Coffee, of course, as well known, and then our very own Garner Indoor Recreation Center. Just wanted to highlight here, again, for the benefit of everyone, Downtown Garner Association kicking off the collaborative effort to expand the Main Street area between the Rec Center and Full Bloom. Hopefully, have, be pretty far along with that by the time we report back in a year. And then even within planning, our Senior Planner for Transportation is tasked with coordinating the betterments for the bridge projects at Benson Road and Vandora Springs eventually. Again, focusing on making sure that we have walkable bridges and that they're inviting to pedestrians and to the passing public as well.
If quick curiosity, add there is obviously a lady. Add a little explanation of what that might be, what it would look like?
I think I have the graphic a little later, but it essentially would be kind of in keeping with the existing streetscape, maybe trying to elevate it in terms of stories just a little bit higher, but a two, maybe parts of it being three-story building that would bring new commercial and office space to the Main Street corridor and just kind of help bridge that gap visually so that we continue that line from Gearworks all the way down to the Rec Center. I believe it's, I can't remember exactly how many square feet we're looking at, but I want to say it's like 20,000 to 30,000, or is it not that much?
Might be the footprint of about no more than 8,000.
Maybe that was total.
I thought that was total with multiple stories.
Finally, the last recommendation in working places was really to revisit and revise our parking standards and do it comprehensively. Parking is just one of those things that's a constant tug-of-war with developers. For the most part, they always want way more than what the town really probably would prefer to see. There's impervious surface benefits with less parking, but at the same time, you do have some uses, like apartments, where we try to be cautious that we're not shortchanging and having people spill out into adjacent neighborhoods and the like. So, it's been a long time since we've looked at those parking requirements. Again, that's been incorporated into the UDO rewrite project and something that we'll be taking a real hard look at. Theme number four, recreation. Recreation does more than just provide our community a place to play. It does those larger things of signifying a commitment to our town as a healthy place to be and increasing property values by having green spaces that are attractive, as well as connecting ourselves internally and to other places nearby through our Greenway system that's expanding. So, the guiding principles here were to, of course, identify and continue to invest in outdoor spaces, connect us internally with open spaces, continuing to add indoor recreation space. We kind of knew that one was going to be an easy one. Connecting us with larger regional trail network and exploring public and private partnerships, including those with the towns around us. I have a little excerpt of the Wake County Greenway Plan showing on this slide, and again, that really speaks to when we want to connect to these other communities, we have to be engaged with their planning and park staff to try and make those things happen. The first recommendation was to secure open space and recreation areas in the south of town. By the time this plan was adopted, we had already secured the Meadowbrook Golf Club, but then after that, we did continue to acquire the additional land adjacent to Hebron Church to expand that facility and give us another point of access. We continue to talk with developers that come in with us about possible land acquisition. Most recently, probably more in the McCullers area, since that's an area that's just starting to grow and we really don't have a presence in that area, so we do continue to talk about it in case there is an opportunity. We also have the new practice of recognizing our Greenway corridors as parkland and actually leveraging our plans to start getting portions of that Greenway system built through private development. And so, to that end, we have had a few approvals that have taken advantage of that or been agreeable to pursue that. Those have been the Aurora subdivision, the Bethel, and the Oak Park West subdivisions. So, I fully anticipate we'll continue to see more of that going forward. Second one was to develop a public arts program. Again, this is one of those that's pretty staff-intensive, no lead identified yet at this point, but again, particularly the Downtown Development Manager, planning staff, and parks and rec bring some things to us as part of their facilities. We try to incorporate public art where we can, whether it's gateway signage, trying to keep some of these developments that are coming in around the edges to help us put in new gateway signage, rather than having to pay for it out of our pockets. The Masonry Relief Panel on the side of the Chipotle Building was another thing that was kind of done as a cooperative, just joint conversation and pre-development meetings. And then, of course, downtown was very instrumental in getting the Garner mural on the side of the Full Bloom Roastery, and I think that's become a pretty iconic piece for the town. A third recommendation to invest in maintenance of parks and rec facilities that we have, as well as increasing programming. And just looking at this from a very high level, we had the restructuring that we did at Public Works. We have the new superintendent's position over the Parks and Grounds Division, and underneath that, we have new supervised teams that bring both expertise in just general park maintenance, as well as turf maintenance for athletic fields, and added as well as turf maintenance for athletic fields, and added several new positions. You also hired a new recreation superintendent, anticipating the opening of the indoor rec center. So I think we've done quite a bit just in the past year, just at staffing level and reorganizing to support this recommendation. Preserving, installing, and maintaining street trees. This, again, has been incorporated as a task into the UDO rewrite. There are some very major significant discussion points around this one, though. I know Councilman Kennedy, you've brought up maintenance issues many a times, and that is a very big piece of the puzzle. It's where do you place them? What species do you select? And how is that going to impact the future maintenance? Not only just of the trees themselves, but of the neighboring infrastructure. It's something that we have to look at holistically and decide if that's something we want to try and modify a little bit and see what we think might work, or do we just continue kind of with the existing program with a few modifications? We do continue to enforce that as it is on the books today, but we will take a kind of a fresh look to see if there's anything that we can do differently that doesn't impact our maintenance responsibilities going forward. Finally, keeping us moving, the vision statement here is that our transportation system is crucial. It's not just about moving traffic. It's moving people and business products safely and efficiently. It's walking, it's biking, it's public transportation options as for different folks out there to be accessible to other areas of the region. And we had a lot of guiding principles for this and thus the whole separate plan, but we want to increase our knowledge of different techniques that are available to us, whether it's contracting with folks like Uber or Lyft, or doing our own circulator bus route, paratransit, using the full range of congestion management tools that are available to us to help make the flow continue better, identifying projects that have a real good bang for the buck, and also identifying any new funding opportunities that may help us achieve those. Increasing the role of transit, we've got the Wake Transit Plan to kind of help guide us with that. And again, but maximizing the benefits of any new technologies. Prioritizing and defending connectivity so that folks don't have to make, try to make the left coming out of Lowe's Foods to get back down Aversborough Road when their only other option is to go around the two-to-three-mile block to go down Benson to Buffalo to Aversborough and back around the other way. Creating streets that do include some kind of bicycle and pedestrian accommodation. Celebrating our points of entry, welcoming folks to Garner and letting them know that they're here. And then managing 540 as an asset. That will certainly be making a big change to our eastern and southern margins going forward. So the first one, and most of these are incorporated as UDO rewrite tasks, strengthening access management. Again, there's nothing worse for slowing down traffic on major highways than all of these little driveways that people can be pulling out into traffic. So how can we strengthen our regulations to try to consolidate those in the future going forward and making it more planned in a better, more regional context? The second one is to establish a connectivity standard, which kind of, again, goes back to giving people options that they don't have to go way out of their way as their second choice. Give them a second choice that may not be as convenient as the first, but it's still an option that they might consider. Conducting small area plans. To date, we haven't identified any of those, but that is something that you could choose to do, again, through the CIP and budgeting process. Those plans are typically expected to be around $80,000 to $100,000 when you take one of those on. It depends on the scale geographically and the complexity of the issues that you want to study. That being said, we did in-house complete that short study of traffic and roadway capacity in the Aversborough-Benson-Buffalo Timber Corridor area. And I think we have that online, but if not, that is something that I will make sure that we do have out there. But again, that was fairly, fairly short, not very complex. We didn't delve down too deeply into it, but it was enough to really answer the questions and convey the information that we needed to. Adopting complete street policies and guidelines. Again, this would be incorporated into the UDO as just part of the overall regulatory requirements. I've seen a lot of graphics that try to demonstrate complete streets. The one that I'm showing here is one that goes a little further than most, and I kind of appreciate because it is so all-encompassing. But it shows you not just what's at the street level and what you see on the surface, but reminds you that you've got all these utilities underground that also need to be thought about and brought into the equation. Again, just a good reminder that it's not always all about traffic. It is utilities, it's practical things, it is aesthetic things, it's all of that combined into one. So how has this plan been influencing our daily work? Clearly, staff reports. Every staff report, pretty much, you see on a new development case that comes before you, is citing this document on a regular basis. Initially, we struggled a little bit with how best to incorporate that. We tried the more succinct kind of tabular approach, but quickly realized that that was probably not as effective in terms of helping the broader public understand what's really in the document. So we have revamped those reports recently to kind of excerpt whole sections so that people are getting a little bit more of the gist of what's in the plan. We do include this as required background materials anytime we take on another planning effort or project. It's been included as required reading, so to speak, for the rewrite of the UDO. We shared these documents as part of the Parks Rec Cultural Resources Master Plan. The folks at McAdams have been very well-versed in these plans as they're producing that plan for you. And finally, at pre-development and pre-application meetings, David has loaded these documents and maps onto our internal drives so that we can pull them up at the drop of a hat when we need to, up on those touchscreens that are in the conference rooms. We consult them in every meeting, pretty much, that I've sat in on, and we have at least four of those each and every week. We're currently booked through the end of the year and taking appointments for January. Finally, just to glance through the opportunity sites that were in the plan. Again, we had five of these. Garner Station, what impact has the plan had on that area? The renderings that we came up with looked at how we might redevelop the Garner Station area, and it is guiding the BRT plans that are being discussed now for this area. Certainly, the fact that Mr. Patel has gone to Go Raleigh and is heavily involved in the BRT portion of their transit program, I think will be beneficial to Garner going forward. He understands what we did as part of this plan and can help coordinate things further on Raleigh's side as well. Go Raleigh, we're not going to be the first. That was kind of the point of my last bullet. They are doing the New Bern Avenue Corridor first and have a pretty significant track record thus far on that corridor, so we won't be the guinea pig when it comes to our turn, which I think is another benefit. And having this plan in place is certainly a good aid in those discussions. The Northeast Gateway, here, we kind of knew it was going to be mostly industrial and commercial, but we wanted to do it in a way that was still pleasing and attractive. Of course, Amazon is the first component of this area to come up out of the ground. I've been pretty pleased that as it has come up out of the ground, it's pretty much as I thought it would look. We were able to, you know, discuss things with them about their parking. Some of that was also helped by the presence of the brownfields in the back of the site. They kind of had to pull the building up a little closer, but that certainly did not, that was a good thing, I think, in terms of just the overall appearance. The architecture, we worked with them to enhance that a little bit, just basic things through the paint scheme that they chose, adding some additional breaks of the planes of the building, and putting in a few stamped treatments of concrete panels. Again, it's a big building. There's no getting around that, but I think for its size and scale, we were able to enhance that proportionally. Auburn Station, the vision for this station is really to help try and guide discussions related to the commuter rail transit component of the Wake Transit Plan. This could be a possible park-and-ride facility area in the future, along with some small commercial office development associated with it. There are a lot of environmental features. There's the historic house across the street from, or on the west side of Auburn-Nightdale Road, as soon as you exit 70 there by the driving range. We have had pre-development meetings in this area, not a lot, but there have been a few, one for some apartments that would put some higher density within walking distance of a train station, as well as a bank. So the interest is starting to pull out that way as 540 gets a little more realistic and on people's radar. Fifth Avenue, again, Fifth Avenue really was focused on because it has the potential to be a complementary commercial center to Main Street on the other side of 70. There's really one or two property owners involved in this area. To date, there haven't been any discussions, but again, we do have a good talking piece if those conversations do ever get started. And finally, speaking of downtown, downtown is, we have cited this a few times, the location to promote our local flavor and flair. We do have the public investments in the new Rec Center, possibility, again, of a second commuter rail stop, and we have had the renovation of several Main Street buildings, and we have those new eateries and drinking establishments. So again, this is one that the downtown group has latched on to and is helping us promote, and we use it every time we are talking to somebody in this vicinity. So unanticipated impacts and challenges, map amendments. Certainly, I think, a higher-than-anticipated number. We knew going in that drawing this map on a parcel-by-parcel designation, as opposed to the previous map, was these bubbles applied to a map more generally. Those bubbles gave us a lot more flexibility in how we interpreted and presented things to you, but it was also, at times, probably difficult to interpret. How far could you really stretch something without pushing the envelope too far? So the parcel-by-parcel nature of this map, it is less flexible for interpretation, but it does bring about a little bit more discussion in the public forum about why we're choosing to either expand or modify some of these future land use designations. A good example the other night was, we did put that one parcel on the corner of Auburn-Nightdale and Garner Road as kind of a neighborhood office or neighborhood commercial space. I don't think anybody really ever expected that commercial or office would be limited to just that one parcel. So it established a presence and gave us an opportunity to talk about and think about how big we might want that to become at some point in the future. So it does require us to think a little more methodically, and I think that's actually a good thing. It is a challenge, though, to educate stakeholders on the process. Even internally as staff, for a little while, there was a reluctance to go the route of introducing a map amendment. Was that a major thing? Previously, it had been. Now I think that we're learning how to use this and what to expect. It's really just kind of part of the process. It is just a guiding document, and it is anticipated to morph and change over time. And that's just something that's been a little bit of a learning curve. The second one that I really felt was a big one was the fact that we retained the 2010 Garner Transportation Plan. It was always anticipated that it would be just an update, but I think we hoped that we would be able just to kind of retire the actual document from 2010. And I think some of that was just a repercussion of the fact that it was added somewhat later in the scope for the overall project and not, because it was an update, maybe didn't get as much attention on the front end. The one thing that we found when we got to the point where we had the final draft and we were able to kind of test-run our use of the plan in presentations and reports, we realized that there were some deficiencies in some of the maps that we would really need to keep the 2010 plan document kind of on our shelves and be able to refer to because some of the recommendations, the way we chose to focus on certain roadway corridors, we kind of left others with the assumption that the previous recommendations would be carried forward. Unfortunately, they weren't actually in the new document, so we have to keep that for now. We were able to consolidate some of the map elements from both documents, and that did lead to a little bit of the delay that we saw, but we do have additional work and would like to see more progress, and at least if not by next year, by the year after that, have that plan completely consolidated so that we can just have one document to refer to for our transportation guidelines and recommendations. Some of the goals that I've seen are outlined for 2020. There's certainly others, and anybody can feel free to share with me at any time what you would like to see us work on in the coming year. But some of the things that our staff has identified is to report on progress made on a significant number of recommendations that have been incorporated into the UDO project. We'll certainly be well along in that process by this point next year, so there'll be a lot of updates to provide you with on that. Again, to complete that evaluation of the ARP livability index tool, again, hope to have that done in the spring so that we can report on that next fall. Monitor the progress of partnerships to expand retail restaurant space in downtown. Again, I think the timeline for that, we'll hopefully have good progress on that next fall. Continue to place emphasis on private proposals within opportunity sites and making sure that we're sharing our visionary plan information from this document as soon as we possibly And again, just as mentioned, the progress on consolidating our 2010 Garner Transportation Plan with the existing new plan update. I'd like to expand the annual report, the one that you get in print, to include more progress updates on the detailed lists of practices and policies that are outlined in the plan. They're not highlighted as the key recommendations, but they are some additional policies and practices that came out of the process, where we were encouraged to look at and evaluate those. And then there was also another more summary set of recommendations in the back of the book on pages 94 to 98. It included the ones that were highlighted, but also added some others. For this report, I think this has been pretty lengthy, so again, I'd like to try to expand the report further for the written document to kind of identify what we've accomplished in those other areas. And then finally, identifying a working group outside of the Technical Review Committee to kind of help assist in monitoring and the production of the annual report. If nothing else, I realize that there are other, not that I realized it, but it was reemphasized to me, that there are so many other departments that are playing little bits and pieces into this comprehensive plan, and that's why the comprehensive plan is not just an important document for planning, but there is input. Um, but there is input and further and better information that I think that we can incorporate into the report, again, particularly from parks and rec, um, economic development and engineering, uh, just to name a few. So that's what I have for you in terms of a summary. Thank you for bearing with me, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to see if I can answer them. Otherwise, I'll look forward to, uh, hopefully posting this online and putting this out there for public consumption.
Thank you for a very thorough report. A lot of interesting, exciting stuff, uh, planning, and as you mentioned, somewhere near the end, there's still a lot of work to be done, obviously, but.
Absolutely.
Thank you much. I'll start down here and see if your questions come in. Mr. Vance?
Uh, first of all, Jeff, I would say a tremendous amount of work has been done on this comprehensive plan, and, uh, it's clearly a collaborative effort, uh, is taking in the nuances of Garner moving forward and the, uh, the trends that are happening, happening within the area and incorporating a lot of, uh, there's a lot of information, and my, my hat's off to you and the staff for pulling this together, and, uh, look forward to, to look forward to implementing, uh, so some of the items in, in within the plan, which are actually being implemented now as we speak. So, good job.
Thank you.
Very good.
I'd like to say that, that, uh, I echo Mr. Vance's comments and also say that some of the things that you've identified in here, um, we saw so many years ago and nobody else saw it. And so you see it, it's, it's in here, and it makes you know that the vision we had a long time ago wasn't for naught. Your expertise and your, your talent in this area. Thank you very much.
Mr. Singleton?
Good stuff. I'll keep it short and simple.
Thank you.
Yes, um, couple, three comments. The, uh, we, you're working, well, the town's been working hard on, on its, the area that it can manage in its development, and then we hear recently, which probably shouldn't be much of a surprise, and is, uh, Fuquay, uh, has got their ETJ expansion plans out there before the county, and by the time we hear of it, it's pretty well grooved. Is that, is that anything that's, have you seen anything there that, uh, that raises a red flag for Garner?
At this point, I, I would, I would say no, simply due to the fact that we do have a longstanding, um, we call it an annexation line of agreement, uh, with them that outlines the future areas that, as they develop in our annex, will belong to Fuquay and those that areas that will come into Garner. Um, I've not seen a lot of pushback, um, on that agreement. Um, there have been some initial discussions and inquiries, maybe about some of the areas that are assigned to Garner that are further down south, even south of 42. Um, and I think a lot of that in the future will just come down to where the utilities play out. That really is a key piece of the overall puzzle. Currently, at this point in time, they are a little better situated to service parts of their ETJ, which is why I think they were able to ask for such a large area, um, because of where they positioned particularly their sewer infrastructure. Um, that was really one of the biggest limiting factors for us when we did our ETJ request. Um, but otherwise, like I say, I don't see any major red flags as far as our ability to grow into our urban service area.
Well, I think we were a little bit stymied ourselves in that. We always thought the Swift Creek was a, uh, big obstacle to cross over. Well, pump stations handle it all the time, and. Stations move water, and sewer pump stations pump it as well. But, uh, that having been said, uh, now that, uh, 540 is, is, is getting underway and it's, I'm sure it's going to start, uh, people aren't going to wait until it's finished to, uh, to think about how they're going to develop, and is, is it too, uh, and, and they're not all going to, in, uh, develop on the inside of 540, they'll, they'll develop on both sides. Is there any reason now that we should start thinking about an E, a sec, uh, uh, another ETJ request to, uh, to go ahead and stake our claim because, uh, they're not making it, well, hate saying that, oh, thing about making no more land, but, uh, it, uh, Fuquay's known to be aggressive, and, uh, they don't, they don't mind sticking their nose out there, and seems to be successful. Now, um, it, well, I'll leave it, I'll go back to that, is there, maybe that hadn't really been thought about, but I, I think that's an issue that, uh, probably needs to come to the forefront and have a plan about that. Last thing I'll mention is that with our comp plan and, uh, transportation plan and with the thinking about the UDO, compare all of those things with economic developments, opportunity zones that are trying to encourage people to, uh, to redevelop within those areas. Are, are you sensing any incompatibility or, uh, competition, or it's, we're not zoned correctly, or it's just, it's, uh, maybe the right word is compatibility, where we've classified, where the areas that are classified as opportunity zones, uh, are, is there a conflict that's going to keep them from being able to, uh, to, to develop, or is that something that's just in the course of natural redevelopment and, and this, just have to go through normal rezoning, et cetera, where it's necessary?
For the most part, I would say that hasn't, it hasn't come up as a, as a roadblock or a significant challenge yet. Um, but that being said, I, I would be interested to take a little more comprehensive look at how those two maps align between our future land use plan and where those opportunity zones are. Um, so far, when we've been having discussions with folks, things are pretty well, pretty well in line. Um, that being said, there still probably will need to be rezonings, even though the future land use plan may be calling for it, just because we do have so many areas that are really in those holding zones of R40 and R20, which are more county-style development. Um, but yeah, that would be, I think, a good exercise for us to go through, but like I say, it hasn't, hasn't presented a, any obstacles as of yet.
No guarantee we're going to have any, uh, takers on the opportunity zones either, but at the same time, no sense in allowing something to happen that we know clearly would be, uh, we just wind up having to correct that or create a, an odd situation down the road. And that's just thinking down the road.
Yep.
That's the only thing I was bringing to our attention. Thank you for the effort and, uh, always looking ahead, and that's what planning is about, and it's, it requires a heck of a lot of discipline. It doesn't just come naturally. It takes time and effort, and, uh, thank you very much for your report.
You.
Okay, counsel, any other follow-up? Thank you, Jeff. Well done. Appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Manager, I guess, uh, since we've completed the main items, we now return to our first work session item that Mr. Michael was leading, right?
Yes, that's correct. Mr. Frank should come up and continue the discussion on the CIP.
Return to the game in progress.
Yep.
What's the, what's the score?
Please.
Pretty sure I was winning. I don't know exactly.
Capital renewal or maybe Stormwater project?
We'd finished IT.
Yeah, we're probably.
Stormwater, say 78.
Well, in your agenda pack, it's 78.
Yeah, so we had just finished the conversation about the IT projects with a fiber ring. So moving on to the Stormwater projects, so there are two identified there, Forest Ridge Road and Junction Boulevard, and both those two projects were identified as part of the initial infrastructure study that was completed several years ago, and then some additional work was done, um, recently, I believe I make Adams to go out and take a second look at those projects, and based on staff recommendations in terms of how long we could defer those projects or how long we could, um, wait until we needed to make the repairs, um, I populated that based on the current estimates in the McAdams report and then, um, the years that we talked about at that point, and there will be some additional analysis done on, um, looking at the exact projects just to make sure that the cost estimates are accurate. And the other thing I would point out here is that these are the projects that have been identified at this point, but we do know that there will be, as time goes on, a significant number of additional projects, and as you can see here, the funding source is unknown. Um, we did not incorporate this event of bond funding, so one of the major things we will have moving forward as we have exist, our existing infrastructure age will be defined, um, either a dedicated revenue source or some way to fund these projects as they continue to be identified in the future. The next two, uh, slides are capital renewal, so you can see on the first, um, slide, it's got roofs and interior, exterior repairs. You can see on, um, FY22, there are two primary items, and that would be Avery Street Recreation Center roof and natural playground elements, and that would be at White Deer, so those were the two items that have currently been identified as the top priority. Then all the way down, um, you see there is nothing else in FY22, but there are a variety of projects, and then at the bottom, you have the fire department requirements. So Wake County performed a separate infrastructure study, um, as part of going out and looking at all the different fire departments, and that's what we've included here is our, our portion of funding that we would have to provide based on the current, um, split, so it's about the 50-50 match in terms of what Wake County provides and what the town provides. So that's the $716 you see, um, for transfer from general fund, funding the FY21 requirements for fire, and then everything else has been included in unfunded category. So this, similar to Stormwater, would be something where we need to work to find that dedicated revenue source. Um, I know Avery Street Roof is apparently in bad condition. I guess the playground is, I don't think, I'm not sure it's there anymore. Um, so we gotta work as we build these new items to continue to think about how we're gonna take care of the items that currently exist and make sure that they get replaced at an appropriate timeframe, and also as we build the new items, build in a replacement cycle, so if we buy something that's $50,000 and has a 10-year replacement cycle, make sure we're putting funding away or have some sort of mechanism to when it gets to the time where it reaches its end of life that we are able to then replace it. So that concludes the variety of projects that are included within the CIP. There are some additional items of note. Um, I mentioned as we went through, but many of them do have a significant operating impact. So for example, Fire Station 5, the new park facility amenities, so those are just a couple of examples, but there will be that operating impact that we will incorporate into the five-year budget. Additional personnel and operating funding will be required to execute the referendum, so there have been a couple of different positions that have been discussed to make sure that we are able to have the resources to manage the projects, but then also, you know, different things like, um, providing funding for the communication efforts or the education efforts, um, potential financial expertise, potentially positions in parks to help them with the, the execution of their master plan, so staff has continued to look at these, but if we really want to do the referendum as well as, I think we'd like to, there will be some additional requirements on the staffing and the operating side just to make sure that we are well-prepared to, uh, address the, the workload that will come with the referendum. And we've talked about this a little bit, but there will be some upfront costs required to obtain accurate estimates for some of these potential projects. So Mr. Singleton mentioned the, um, facility study, so that's one where we've already gone down the road of trying to figure out, um, how much the additional requirements Public Works needs in terms of space or the space needs assessment, um, but some of the transportation projects as well will have an additional cost, and that's what we talked about earlier, where we have to figure out what the, kind of the firm estimate is that then can be put into the, um, CIP so that we make sure that we are within the realm of reasonability, at least in terms of what the, uh, the project costs will ultimately be, so that we don't significantly overfund our projects or significantly underfund projects to where then we are required to use, um, to defer the project or to use, uh, fund balance. For planning purposes, we put together a calendar of parks and transportation with these two being the biggest two components. So as you can see on the park calendar, they've already gone through the process of identifying potential projects, and that would be completed in the January 2020 timeframe, and that's really the master planning part. Uh, review potential park projects in this late winter to early spring, hold staff park committee meetings to discuss the projects at a, uh, staff level, April and June, review identified projects with Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee in August, do the same, um, with council in September through May, and then by May, we need to be getting out to educate, um, educate the public and, and provide them some information about the referendum. And then on the transportation side, we could review the identified projects. We've already done that, can go through the process as of obtaining some additional public input, review projects with planning commission and council, work with consultants to, um, review the identified projects and come up with those firm estimates, and then ultimately finalize the missed list in May. Ultimately, what this is really trying to do is to show that all we, though we have 18, 19 months, the time's gonna go by fairly quickly, and we do still have a lot of work to do, so that's why the initial guidance that you guys provide tonight will be critical, and as we check in over the course, next several months, um, just making sure that we are, um, doing all that we can do to, to keep projects on schedule. In terms of next steps, staff will utilize the input provided to prepare a recommended CIP that will be presented in the springtime. By that time, we would have the master plan finalized, we would have some additional information about revaluation, we would have gone through the operating budget a little bit so we can kind of make those joint decisions at the same time. The operating impacts from the various items will be incorporated into the five-year budget model, which we discussed last year, which we will again discuss this year, so you'll see the items, um, that have a funding impact incorporated into that model. And as developments occur, staff will provide, uh, updates just to make sure council is aware of, you know, the status of our projects and where we're going over the next 18 months. So with that, I have two other little pieces of information that I was gonna provide, and then I'm happy to take questions, and these were just questions that were asked in advance. So I just wanted to let everybody know that Wake County did provide, uh, FY21 recommended, not recommended, but their estimate for the real estate tax base. So the tax base increased from, uh, $3,687,000, million, uh, in FY20 to $3,834 million in FY21, an increase of 147 million or 4%. Um, that was just based on growth, so that's no reappraisal impact, that's just the growth of the, uh, the tax base. The impact of reappraisal on the real estate tax base was a 26.5% increase, so that is a 26.5% above what we've already seen, and that's in the values over the last four years. So the first number I gave you was just the new buildings, the new structures that have been built, and on top of that, that infrastructure, the things that have already existed have increased by, on average, 26.5% over the last four years, and this increased the tax base to $4,666,000,630,000. Um, and then just for context, the impact of the reevaluation will result in a revenue-neutral tax rate of 46.56 cents, which is a decrease of 9.44 pennies. So the revaluation did have a pretty significant impact, as did the growth estimates that were provided by Wake County, and I would just point out that it is still incredibly early in their process, so I would anticipate these numbers to potentially change a little bit, but it's, um, at least their initial estimates at this time.
That is one heck of a number. I, I don't, I cannot remember any time, even the one eight-year valuation that has changed 26%.
It was substantial. Um, one of the big things that really benefited at Garner was the largest increases in terms of percentages were in homes valued under $250,000. So I think that was 37%, and I could go back, and we will actually have Marcus Kinraid come in January and provide a little overview of this. He's the Wake County, uh, tax collector or tax administrator, but the largest percentage increases were in homes that were value under $250,000.
Under.
Under. Were a million-dollar home, didn't really increase all that much percentage-wise, were homes under $250,000 increased at a significant percentage, so.
That demand?
Yeah, demand, then just not many of them there, so us, Fuquay, I think Sebelin, some of those towns that have a larger housing stock, um, saw the residential values increase fairly significantly. It was across the county where there were fairly large increases, but some of those communities that have a housing stock with some more affordable housing did see pretty good increases.
75% of ours is under 225.
Yeah, it was a large increase.
Be some surprises out there.
Excuse me just for a minute. Mr. Dallinger, I meant to invite you back up here. You were part of the original discussions. Obviously, it's pretty, pretty late in the process now, but if you had any questions, you can feel free to come up and we can attend to those. But go ahead, I'm sorry. Questions from others?
There was a second piece of information you said you had.
And then there was an additional question about the impact of Amazon. So we saw our first impact from Amazon in FY20, and this is a little bit confusing, so bear with me. The way Brownfields works, once a building is complete, that's when they take their tax credit. So then they're not going to take a tax credit on a 50% complete building. They're going to want it to be 100% so that it can be the maximum. So last year, we did see some impact in FY20 because as of January 1, it was partially complete but not fully. And we are still, or Wake County is still determining whether the building is fully complete. My understanding is in the next month or two, somebody will go out from Wake County to determine if the building is substantially complete. If it is, then they would have to apply the Brownfield tax this year for FY21. If not, then it would go to FY22, if that makes sense. So Wake County will make that decision, and that was based on a conversation I had with Mr. Stallings. So we should know that. But either way, we would have some impact in FY21, whether that's 10% of the overall assessed value if the building's 100% or, you know, 90% or 95% of the building, depending on exactly how Wake County, how finished Wake County determines that it is. And then from there, there is a five-year period of the tax credits. So it goes from year one being a 90% tax break or tax exclusion, year two being a 75%, year three being 50%, year four being 30%, year five being 10%, and year six getting the full value. So if in FY21, if that's the first year of Brownfields taking effect, then we would receive the full value in six years. So in FY26, and if it's in FY22, that would be in FY27 where we would see the full impacts, and we would expect the impact, depending on tax rates and different things along those lines, to be approximately $1 million in full. And the only other thing I would point out there is that there's the two different pieces. There's the building, but then there's also the personal property revenue. So I believe FY22 is likely when the personal property revenue will come in, and that will be approximately $560,000, and that is exempt from Brownfields. So we would see that full impacts when their personal property, so all the conveyor belts and stuff have been assessed.
But conveyors are considered personal property, not inventory.
That is my understanding, at least in terms of the tax.
This recent building permit that we saw for $65 million, that was personal property.
Believe so, yes.
So then the original building and grounds, et cetera, the empty building and grounds, then is that, is that what they earlier identified as a $200 million investment? Or does that include the, do you think that that's going to have to include the conveyor system?
I think the full investment building plus all the stuff inside was 200 million.
I think it was total. I think that was a total all-in number when they first brought that to us.
Yeah, that the personal property would be approximately 100 million and that the building would be approximately 100 million. I think it's about, those might be somewhat rough, but approximately.
Thank you for that information. I appreciate it. That's, that's, it takes five years to get that windfall, but that's a significant number. And there'll be some critical thinking of how that, how that's used because it can get wiped out real quick. But we've got a major investment out there on that road that could, 6, 8, 10 million dollars that could be earmarked. Some of that could be earmarked to help pay for some of that debt on construction. But if it's time for questions, could I ask him?
Yeah, yeah, I was going to do that next. You're ready. Start here, Mr. Kenny.
Going back to the, to the first, to the first substantial item, I think we got, when we resumed, was on stormwater, and that was a little over $1 million. One of the things to think about there is that's not going to get any better. And that, it's, it's kind of a moderate, it's kind of a moderate cost. It's a little bit, it's a little bit to take out, quite a bit to take out of fund balance. But then again, wait three or four years and it really, could really jump up in increase in value. So there might be some reasoning on if it qualifies for one of those things of do it now and pay yourself back later if it's possible. That's not a decision for tonight, but just thinking strategically about how to do that. But it's one that can, you can grasp it and get it done and move on because there's a lot of things in this whole proposal and getting them done, just like we found out under the current bond referendum, it takes a while to implement all of those projects. It'd be interesting, I reckon, there was 25 or 30 different contracts lit, and that's, that's a lot of effort. One of the other observations, there was not necessarily a separate section for property acquisition. Yes, there's going to be property acquisition associated with some of the individual projects. I'm only just thinking, and I'm not, I don't have necessarily an example, but I suspect we'll, we're looking at the Parks and Recreation Plan. When it was talking about, you're still going to need to buy property, and we probably need to think, should we include a section on property acquisition? Something that, not only Parks and Recreation, but there may be something else particularly like, who knows, the Public Works. The revaluation information, that's going to, that's going to create a lot of discussion for how that's handled and what kind of influence that has on economic decisions and budget decisions and reestablishing the tax rate, et cetera. But not giving away, not giving back every bit of it because you've got, you've got to save some in that bucket to carry you through four years. But it shouldn't be too surprising. I noticed in, particularly in some older neighborhoods in Charlotte that might have been 40 years old, 35% increases. Bingo. I mean, and there were homes that were already $350,000, $400,000, and people were getting tax bills for over half a million and scaring the pants off of them. But this looks like you're going to have a, I think it's going to be a real, there's a lot of work to be done between now and holding the bond referendum, but my hat's off to you for laying down the gauntlet and putting some numbers out there in a timeframe, and good luck on it. Thank you, Michael.
Greg?
I appreciate all the information that you provided us today, you and then the work done by Davin Board. Having on hand is a good framework to start with. And I know you're going to fill in a lot of blanks between now and when we talk about this in three months, but good information to get started on. So I appreciate it. I'm sitting here looking at the debt capacity case summary right now. I pulled up the desk, and I'm staring at, looking at numbers. So thanks for the information.
Ms. Behringer.
I would echo those remarks. That's a lot of work, and we appreciate your efforts.
Mr. Vance.
Appreciate your efforts. Very good. Very well done.
Thank you.
And I would just say, Michael, thank you for your indulgence. I know you, we had to interrupt the meeting, and then you had to wait in line. So you were, you were patient, at least outwardly anyway. But thank you very much. Yeah, a lot, a lot of information to, for us to digest and, you know, sort of a roadmap as we look to the future there. So thanks for everything. Okay. Okay, I think if Michael has finished, Mr. Manager, if I'm following the agenda correctly, we're back to manager reports. Did you have something?
I have no further manager reports, just the rec center update that you received earlier.
Okay. So we'll go to council reports. Mr. Kennedy, we'll start with you.
I had one on my mind, and I did not write it down, and I, maybe it'll come back. If not, it'll go off into oblivion.
Okay. If you think about it while we're going to others, you let us know. Mr. Singleton?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Ms. Behringer?
Only thing I have, sir, is that next Tuesday night on December 2, I will be bringing tickets for the Women's Club Christmas Tour of Homes to be held on December 8, so bring your money.
Mr. Vance? I have nothing.
Behringer with a subtle arm twist.
Yeah, that was, wasn't it? I'd like to mention just two things. One is, I was reminded this past Saturday, as my wife and I had the opportunity to attend the Broadway series with the three talented ladies and Mr. Vogel who performed there. That's a great, I think, partnership between the town and the chamber. It's a great series, and we've been able to bring some outstanding, talented folks to our town as a result of that. So my hat's off to particularly Neil Paget, and of course, Tim Stevens gets a lot of credit for that as well. The other thing I would say is, at least in my mind, I think today's date is rather historic in many ways, but particularly for this council, I'm thinking we're probably, you know, sort of marking the end of a 12-year run when this council's been together, excluding Mr. Johns, who we lost to death some time back. But it's been, it's been a unique run, probably the last time we will meet in this forum. I know we're coming together on the 2nd, but that'll be the, that'll be the transition date. So let me just say to this group that I think the council's accomplished a lot of things, and it's been a, it's been a real ride to participate with you. But didn't, didn't want the day to pass to at least note the good work that this council has done. And we look forward to future councils. It's a high bar set for us to move the town on forward. Others of you will have a chance probably to make comments on December 2 if you want. That's all I have.
Mr. Kennedy has promised that next Monday, when he leaves, he'll give me his list of items for council reports at the end. I'll report them for him. That's why he didn't have them tonight. He saved them up for next week.
I was going to say, can you cut them down just a little bit?
One of those eight or 10 items.
Okay. Well, hearing nothing else, I'd mentioned earlier, I'd like for this council to consider going back in the closed session under the same statutory site, I believe it is, 143318, North Carolina statutes, 143318, point 11A1, for further discussion of some, of some closed item issues.
Let's move that we go in the closed session for the statute as so noted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second here. Any opposition? Excuse me, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay. Let's, let's reassemble in the closed session room, please.
Mr. Marshman, whenever you're ready.
Okay, call the council back to order. The council met in closed session to discuss some legal matters, legal issues, and we gave our staff some instructions in regards to those discussions. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There's none opposed. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.